So, Ms. Mayor, we could, I guess you've got to bring it in, so.
We are live now.
Okay. Thank you all for attending this May 30th special meeting of the governing body. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And ask the clerk to read roll call, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmember Siller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala. Showing her on the screen, so I'll show her present. Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Kell. Nager.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer. All right, we have eight present with councilmembers Kell and Hofer absent.
And I am here, Brenda, I lost signal.
I've got your present, thank you.
Okay. Roll call being conducted now, well, there's a need for the governing body on this special meeting to go into executive session. Will the city attorney read, please?
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed forty-five minutes to discuss the acquisition of real property at a set location in the city as justified by KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B six. The open meeting will resume for the public that are present in person in the ECR conference room as well as on Facebook Live and our city page for the public in attendance. The governing body will remain in virtual format. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations. City manager Wade and other staff he deems necessary.
Thank you. You've heard the reason to go into, or need to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote yes.
Aye.
Um, ma- mayor, sorry, point of order, do we need to first make a motion to do it in a second?
Oh, sorry, you're correct.
Uh, so moved, mayor.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second to go into executive order?
Second.
Second, motion and second. Now, all those, do we have to do a roll call with the virtual?
Why don't we do a roll call to make it clear?
Okay, we'll do a roll call for the vote to go into executive session. Brenda?
Councilmember Snager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Siller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
And Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
We have eight yes motion carries.
A motion's been carried. We will move into executive session. Uh, I marked the time, was it twelve oh eight right now? For forty-five minutes? All those in favor, we've, well, we voted. So, we will now recess into executive session.
And I believe that we are now live.
Okay, I couldn't see any change. Thanks for letting me know. Okay, we've come out of our executive session. There is a need to return into an executive, second executive session. Uh, if the city attorney will read, please.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed forty-five minutes to discuss the acquisition of real property at a set location in the city as justified by KSA forty-three nineteen B six. The open meeting will resume for the public watching at City Hall in the ECR conference room. Um, it will also resume online. The governing body will remain in its virtual format. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations. City manager Wade and other staff he deems necessary.
Thank you. Heard the need for a second executive session, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion, is that by Councilman Emerson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second. I'll, I'll second.
You have a second by councilwoman Ortiz.
Okay. Hofer, has she joined us? Okay, good. All right, uh, Brenda, if you call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmember Siller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
And Emerson.
Yes.
And Nager.
He had to step away for a quick second.
So we have eight yes motion carries.
Okay, motion's been carried, we'll now return into our second executive session.
We're live.
Okay, thank you. We've concluded our discussions in our second, second executive session. Can you hear me? Okay. And now we are in open session. Is there a motion for the chair to consider? Seeing no hands, I will move a motion to authorize the city manager to acquire fee simple title of the Hotel Topeka at Seventeenth and Southwest Topeka Boulevard by negotiated purchase agreement or at an auction if necessary.
Second.
Have a second from Councilman Emerson. We will, I want to make sure, uh, city attorney, that I don't go out of order. We take our vote and then, uh, have some discussion, or we've, uh...
You would open it up for discussion after it's seconded and then call the vote after discussion is ended.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion from governing body?
Mayor, please recognize.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala.
Thank you, mayor. Um, it sounds like a lot of hard work went into this. I just want to say I have numerous, numerous concerns about this whole deal. Very disappointed in, uh, a lot of different aspects and I have deep concerns um, as I believe that the city attorney may, uh, may as well. And so I will be voting no on this, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Duncan's got his hand raised.
Okay.
I get a clarification from staff, is this a six vote requirement or a seven vote requirement?
This would be a six vote, majority of the council.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess technically majority of the governing body, the mayor is included, so six out of ten.
I keep scrolling through my Zoom here to make sure I don't miss somebody, but...
Councilwoman Ortiz has her, has her hand up.
Okay, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm gonna follow my gut on this one and, um, I'm gonna vote, I'm, I cannot support this. It seemed like the longer we discussed this, the more questions I had. Um, and, um, I feel that, that, that would be the appropriate vote for me, so, um... In a, in a perfect world, if we had more support, um, I, I, I think that would have been a, a better, more support. I'm trying not to say what we discussed, but, um, I think for me, just, um, a lot of the concerns that several of us had, um, I'm, I'm, I will not be able to support this at this particular time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. City attorney, is this, uh, the appropriate time to ask for a public comment as well?
Um, Mr. Mayor, you have Councilman Emerson that's been raising his hand.
Okay, again, screen. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, mayor. Um, yes, like a couple others have expressed, uh, this is not an ideal situation. Uh, not one that I feel, I mean, there's not a hundred percent, there's not a slam dunk for me. Uh, however, given the alternative and the strategic location of this, uh, asset, uh, I, I will vote in favor of this. But I, I share the, um, I share the misgivings of, uh, my colleagues.
Thank you, sir. Hey, I'm scanning my screens to make sure I don't miss anyone else. Anyone else wish to speak to the matter?
I do have one more question, mayor.
Councilwoman?
Um, thank you. Can you tell me, I know that there was a notice that went out for this meeting, but there was no content, specific content. So, is public comment still something that would even be relevant right now if the public didn't know what it was regarding? Or was there something shared with the public beforehand about this particular area?
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala, this is city attorney Stanley. Um, I double-checked that role with the city clerk beforehand and in this instance, um, public comment period would be at the discretion of the mayor who is chairing the meeting. So whether or not you allow it or not is at the discretion of the mayor.
Oh, okay, so that's something that the mayor has to provide. So basically, we're gonna vote on this right now without any public comment, correct?
No, that's not what...
Okay, help me understand, thank you.
That's why I asked the city attorney where the public comment would be appropriate.
Um, I, in this instance, whether or not you allow public comment is a choice of the mayor and it sounds like he is going to allow it. Public comment period would be appropriate now or after the vote at your discretion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let's move forward with public, uh, somebody?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we have two individuals that are on Zoom, not yet into the session. Uh, one is Kurt Young, one is Sean Dixon, both with the intention of supporting this vote. Uh, I know the deputy mayor is on a very tight timeline here, so, um, that would be your discretion.
Um, let's move forward with the public comment and, uh, who, uh, doesn't make any difference which one goes first, uh, if Kurt wants to speak first and then Sean, that'll be fine. So Kurt, or Gretchen, if you'll allow Kurt.
Mr. Mayor, they're both in the session now.
Okay. Kurt, if you would speak, like to speak, public comment to the matter, please do so.
Okay, um, first of all, I'm gonna thank you for the, your consideration of this matter and, and, uh, allowing me to comment here this afternoon. Uh, first of all, I want you to understand that it is imperative that Topeka and Shawnee County do not lose this particular property as a convention and association meeting hotel. Uh, I've been concerned throughout this entire process about the possibility of this property selling to what I would call a secondary level developer and becoming something that does not support the lodging industry, uh, or travel and tourism. And at the end of the day, uh, I just don't think that's a risk that, uh, any of us in the community can tolerate. In fact, anything that we can do to ensure that it becomes a top-rated flagged, flagged hotel that can compete in the market, uh, for bona fide conventions and associating meeting traffic will be a huge asset. Uh, the economic benefits of that can be attested to by Sean Dixon and his team. Uh, convention and large association traffic should be a mainstay, uh, to the survival, uh, in our area uh, of travel and tourism. And I, I want to emphasize the fact that it's not only the convention hotel that succeeds in this arena, but the limited service properties that, uh, we have uh, also depend in large part on a successful and thriving convention and association program property as they benefit directly from not only the overflow from the convention hotel, but market compression that takes place when the, the convent, convention hotel is full to capacity and/or as, uh, I'm sorry, uh, get that number. So, it, it's, it benefits everybody in the community from a lodging standpoint as well as just the economic factors. Currently, we're not nearly as successful in bidding competitively as an industry for this business due to our limited convention space. Worse yet, a lot of our state-level associations will not even consider Topeka for their meetings due to the limited convention resources that we currently have. So anything, I'll just wrap it up with this comment, anything that we can do to improve our standing both in the region as a viable and competitive convention destination would be a step forward that we would look forward to. And that, that wraps up my comments and I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kurt. Um, we won't entertain questions back and forth, but thank you for your comments. Uh, Sean Dixon?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Sean Dixon with Visit Topeka. Um, the Topeka Hotel opened in nineteen ninety-eight, uh, then known as the Capital Plaza Hotel. This was a twenty-two million dollar project that took eleven years to develop. Uh, and a committee was put together that included city and county personnel to help get this thing done when it was initially created. Uh, this project attracted hundreds of groups, including, early on, some of the first ones to meet there were the Kansas Motor Carriers Association and the Heartland Mobility Conference. And more than one hundred and fifty groups expressed interest in meeting there in nineteen ninety-eight. In two thousand thirteen, John Hugh Hammond, the developer of the property, passed away, uh, which kicked off a series of events that led to a rapid decline in the quality of the hotel that was once considered one of the best convention hotels in the Midwest. Today, of course, the reputation of this hotel is very different. To say that we struggle to sell that puts it lightly, as the Lodging Association put it. Um, one of our number one reasons that we track for business not occurring or losing, as we call it, lost business in Topeka, is the condition of our convention properties, in particular the, the Topeka Hotel attached to, uh, what some would say some pretty fantastic meeting amenities, uh, with the Expo Center, uh, which was redeveloped recently. Um, this is a very difficult position for us to be in, especially in Topeka. We're a capital city and we rely on the one hundred-plus state associations for our tourism economy. By taking this action today, you are ensuring the survival of Topeka as a convention destination. You aren't leaving things to chance. Our research has shown that a repositioned convention hotel will generate conservatively fifty thousand hotel room nights to seventy-five thousand guests annually at this property. Uh, with an economic impact of that visitor spend nearly twenty million dollars annually as a result of the repositioning of this. But beyond that, it also means some pretty great things for Topeka's reputation. As you all are aware of, uh, the momentum strategy and all the increased business influx into this community has created situations where we would love to host national and regional events uh, that are just out of reach for us currently because of the condition of our properties. But even just last year, when we worked to host the National African-American Travel Conference, we had it at Topeka Hotel, uh, there were still issues as related to that. Those issues are first impressions for this community. There's people coming here to do business for the first time, to travel here for the first time. This is the impression that they're met with. This is what they leave Topeka with, thinking this is who we are. But our support today goes well beyond words. Uh, the team at Visit Topeka has been working behind the scenes for quite some time in preparation for a day like this, for an opportunity like this. A day that will allow us to reintroduce Topeka as a convention destination. I want to thank you and the incredible team at the city of Topeka for working so hard on this. And we look forward to working with you on this incredible endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, having had public comment, I would, at this time, city attorney, like to move and ask for our vote on the motion and the second. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe the clerk is on to call the roll.
Okay. Brenda, if you call the roll, please.
Uh, councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Uh, Hofer?
Yes.
We, we couldn't hear you, somebody was ripping something.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Um, councilmember Siller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
A strong no.
Ortiz?
No.
Emerson?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
And Dobler?
Yes.
All right, we have seven yes with Valdivia Akala and Ortiz voting no, the motion carries.
Thank you, the motion's been carried. And now, uh, I want to ask the city attorney to give provided with me, uh, if necessary, the need for a second motion. Uh, I can make that motion at this time if that's correct.
Um, yes, that would be correct if you would like to proceed with the second motion relating to the acquisition of the property.
Okay. As a follow-up to the vote, and I'd like to make a second motion. The second motion is as follows. To assist in the purchase of Hotel Topeka, I move introduction and passage of a resolution introduced by city manager Stephen Wade determining the city of Topeka's intent to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures through the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds or other obligations to be issued by itself or another government, governmental entity for the benefit of the issuer, the bond. Um, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by councilwoman Nager. Uh, if we can, uh, call the roll, please.
I thought there was discussion, mayor.
Well, as I...
Yes, there would be discussion, Mr. Mayor, you would open it up for discussion of the body.
Okay, I wasn't sure whether we did the vote first and then discussion, but I don't think so. Okay, discussion, please, for the governing body.
Mayor, may I?
Please.
Thank you. Um, this concern, as you're voting about, you know, possibly implementing or the possibility of bonds, we have talked forever in a day about wanting to reduce that. It's cringe-worthy to think that if this deal goes south, that we could be held and by we, I mean, the taxpayers, would be held holding the bag. And I know that there is affirming talk that that will not happen. But again, I also want to interject, as I will vote no on this one as well. This amount of dollars rather than dealing with any number of infrastructure issues, community issues that we have. And I, and I just think it's premature and it's not fair that the meeting is being held at this time rather than allowing for a regular evening meeting where more people can participate in public comment. This feels off to me. Thank you, mayor.
Further discussion from the governing body? Okay. City attorney, is this off, also the opportunity for public comment?
Uh, if you would like to allow public comment, yes.
Okay, do we have anyone online that, uh, wishes to speak to this issue? Okay. Seeing none, uh, we'll ask for the vote. If you'll call the roll, Brenda.
Uh, councilmembers Hofer?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Siller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
No.
Emerson?
Yes.
Nager?
Yeah.
Dobler?
Yes.
And Duncan?
No.
We have five yes. Sorry, six, six yes, I'm sorry, with, um, Valdivia Akala, Ortiz, and Duncan voting no. So the motion carries.
Okay. Motion's carried. And as I understand from the city attorney, there's a final motion to be made?
Uh, yes, a final motion relating to the purchase and acquisition of the hotel.
Okay. I'd like to make this final motion. If the purchase is completed, I move the city manager evaluate options for the redevelopment of Hotel Topeka, subject to a development agreement approved by the governing body. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second from Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Uh...
Sorry. Go ahead. Am I out of turn, city attorney?
I, I think you just heard some rebound from somebody's microphone. You just had a second from Councilman Emerson. So now it's time to open it up for discussion if there is any.
Yes. Yes, is there any discuss, discussion from the governing body? Seeing none, is there any discussion or someone signed up for discussion from, for public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, councilwoman Hofer?
Mayor, I just have a quick question. Is this something that has to be done today or is it something that can be done in our meeting next week?
This is something that can be done in your meeting next week. Um, the city manager has the authority under our charter to investigate development options without any formal vote necessary. So, no, this is not a vote that has to be taken today. It can be under the special meeting rules, but it does not have to be.
I guess I'd like to have a chance to understand this part better. So, I guess I don't know how to request that it is put on our agenda next week.
You could ask for a substitute motion, um, to delay the consideration until next week's motion.
Okay, then I would re, as, put a substitute motion on the floor to delay the discussion until next week on this motion, or on this. I'm not sure what...
That's, that's, I think that's how people understand, yes. So, you just have to defer it to a date certain, it sounds like you're delaying it to a date certain to your meeting, which is...
June second?
Uh...
No, no, June sixth. I'd like to delay it to the June sixth meeting.
Okay.
And I'll second that as well.
Okay. Councilman Emerson? Uh, councilwoman Hiller, did you have your hand up for a second?
I had it up for a comment, mayor.
Okay. Well, we have a substitute motion and a second, go ahead, councilwoman.
Um, I guess my concern is that we, and, and I know we're needing to be hasty here, but we might be missing the point by delaying that motion. If I understand what that is, is what we're doing is saying that, that we're giving the city manager the authority to go buy this property, but what, what you just read, mayor, was saying, but it's conditional on the fact that the mayor does not have, or that the city manager does not have our kind of unlimited approval to just go ahead and negotiate something that we were, that the suggestion was that we vote today to make it very clear that, yes, he had the authority to go purchase, but that it had to come back to this body for the redevelopment agreement. Which to me, if we wait until next week, the purchase would already be done.
City attorney?
I guess as a point of clarification, the city manager always has the authority to go negotiate development agreements, but that's always subject to your approval. So, he can negotiate anything he wants, but it always has to come back to you. Um, this is, the first motion was making an authorization for the city manager to go attempt to acquire. Uh, that is unlikely to be completed by your next meeting on Tuesday. So, I, I don't think there's any legal risk in you delaying this motion if that is the desire of the body.
Ma- mayor, may I?
Uh, yes.
Uh, yeah, okay, well, since, I was, I was just gonna say, I... Yeah. Okay, well, since, I was just gonna say, I would totally support the substitute motion because at least then the public will have the ability to do commentary. Would that be correct, city attorney? That before any additional vote would take place about this, the public would have the ability to have a public comment on it?
The motion is to defer it to the next regular meeting and then you would have regular public comments. So yes, the public would have an opportunity to discuss.
Okay, and would also, at this time, there be something like a fiscal note in place so that the public would be able to see that has more concrete information? And again, I'm not supporting this at all. I'm thinking about the public and what they have a right to see.
I don't think I can answer that question. The fiscal impact, that's probably a question for the city manager. The motion is simply to put consideration of options at the next meeting.
City manager, do you have an answer?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Yeah, we'll see what we can come up with between now and Tuesday. I'll tell you that it's very possible that Tuesday could be a little premature. We may actually need to push it closer to the 13th.
Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have a substitute motion. Councilwoman Hiller?
Mr. Mayor, I think perhaps she didn't put her hand back down.
Yeah, I thought it, okay, I thought it popped back up. That's all right. I'll just ask one more time. Councilwoman Hiller, is she online? Okay.
I think she's on mute.
I'm sorry. I was on mute. Sorry. No, I did. And, and... Again, I'm not looking at this motion, but this motion would not be that the city manager has to have the development agreement itself ready to propose.
No.
Is it?
No, it's not.
Okay. I sense some confusion in the conversation about it. So, I mean, if we're gonna just require, vote in a week to require that he bring it back when it's ready, he wouldn't have to do necessarily any more disclosure or preparation for that vote.
City, go ahead, city manager.
Councilwoman, the Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala was asking for financial impacts and that does require some additional preparation. That was my hesitation.
Okay.
Okay, so, but it would be just sharing that so the public knew a little more about what was up, but not necessarily requiring you to have the development agreement ready.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I would just say to Councilwoman Hiller, let me ask my own questions and don't try to insert in there what's not inserted. Please.
I'm just trying to figure out what we're deferring. That's all.
If we can repeat the motion and then the substitute, maybe that'll clear it up and we can move forward.
Great, thank you.
Madam clerk, would you repeat the substitute motion?
The substitute motion is to defer this item until the June 6th agenda for discussion and/or action.
Okay. Further questions? Okay. If they're seeing none and no opportunity, is there an opportunity for public comment? I don't see any. Okay, we're voting on the substitute motion. If you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Siller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
No.
Emerson?
Yes.
Nager?
Yeah.
Dobler? Duncan?
Yes.
And Hofer?
Yes.
All right, we have seven yes with Ms. Ortiz voting no. The motion carries.
Okay, the motion is carried. Checking again with the city attorney with regards to our next actions on this special meeting. Do we entertain any further action and it's seen none, the open meeting would be concluded?
I am not aware of any further action that is needed. At all times, the governing body can make motions related to the subject matter. However, if there is something I'm unaware of, otherwise you could adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Thank you all for your attention to the meeting on a serious subject. Thank you for taking time out of your day to make sure you were available for this meeting. It shows your active participation as part of the governing body. So thank you very much. Seeing no further action coming forward this body, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.